Good evening and welcome. The November 20th, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. The Reverend Gallup has been kind enough to give us the invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you would all rise.
Bobby, Commissioners, I have a special prayer tonight. We celebrate Thanksgiving this week, and in 1789, President George Washington proclaimed the first Thanksgiving holiday, and the Congress approved it. And I have an abridged part of the prayer that was offered by our first president. Let us pray. May we all reunite in lending unto God our sincere and humble thanks.
For His kind care and protection of the people of this country, for the great degree of tranquility, union, and plenty which we now have and enjoy, for the peaceful and rational manner in which we have been enabled to establish constitutions of government for our safety and our happiness, for the civil and religious liberty with which we are blessed, and the means we have of acquiring and diffusing useful knowledge and general hope for all our citizens. And may we also unite in most humbly offering our prayers and supplications to the good Lord and ruler of nations, and beseech Him to pardon our national and other transgressions, to enable all, whether in public or private stations, to perform our several and relative duties properly and punctually, to render our national government a blessing to all people by constantly being a government of wise, just, and constitutional laws, discreetly and faithfully executed and obeys, to promote the knowledge and practice of true religion and virtue, and the increase of science and knowledge to all citizens. Hear our prayer, O Lord, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Reverend Gallup, thank you, and thank you for your service. First order of business is approval of the agenda.
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment, before I call the first person up this evening, lots of folks in the audience tonight, I would ask that you respect each other. Everyone has various opinions on different things this evening, so please keep that in mind when you come up to speak and when you're sitting in the audience. I do expect a certain degree of decorum in here, and I will hold you to that if need be, so please keep that in mind. You have three minutes to speak. Please pay attention to the lights. Green means go, red means stop. When you're up here speaking, if your time runs over, I will remind you nicely the first time that your time is up, the second time I'll ask you to stop speaking. And with that, I will call Jane Overstreet. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Jane Overstreet, and I live at 1677 Hilltop Road in Corolla, North Carolina, in the off-road area. I just wanted to, I've been going over the agenda, I mean, you know, the driving ordinance for the beach, and a couple of things came out to my attention. I know we were tweaking it two weeks ago when we were here, and one of them is that you have the plan starting Memorial Day. Well, what about the Friday and Saturday and Sunday of Memorial Day weekend? I know that date changes every year because Memorial Day changes. But the other thing is, the area of Swan Beach, which is the area immediately past the parking area that has the most difficulty, starts at milepost 16, in which we have three ramps going into that neighborhood. And if we could move the parking back, or the dune driving back to 16, that's a safer area in which people can then go down to the lower part of the beach. The beach widens at that part. It also, there are four oceanfront, and I mean actual oceanfront, not just oceanfront ownership, houses that are in Swan Beach, and those suffer greatly every storm that we have, almost as much as the other area, but the other area is protected by dunes. If you go up to 17, then you're coming off and trying to get the traffic diverted to go back down to the foreshore at the worst possible ramp to come over. So if people have to stay on the foreshore, I mean, on the high dune in Swan Beach, they'll invariably cut back into the neighborhood to go down that one mile in the roads behind the dune, thus endangering the tourists and everything that rent in that first two blocks off the beach. And then they also are then forced to legally come across Albatross, which is milepost 17. And that's the worst ramp as far as being blinded when you come down there. I just read over the letter that Fruitville Township, or Fruitville Civic Association gave, and I'm in support of, let's take more time to go through these details instead of just putting something in place tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Overstreet. I'll call Sandra Barcroft.
Good evening. I didn't know I was supposed to speak tonight. Ms. Overstreet said I should get up here, so I will tell you my feelings on it. I live at 21443 Madison Springs Road in Cortland, Virginia, but I have had my second home in Carova Beach since 1995, and I've seen a lot of changes. We came here 17 years ago to get parking in the middle of the beach and the ATV permits, which I did approve, and it worked fine. I know y'all have a problem in the area that y'all are talking about, because I've driven it, and I choose to take the back of the, you know, behind the people instead of going in front of the people, but that's my choice. But when you live in Carova Beach, that far down, your only hard-packed road is the foreshore. And my husband's had open-heart surgery this year, and we depend on that foreshore hard-packed. That's how we come in and out. And I do support Ms. Overstreet. And the next speaker, I'm gonna just get out of here in two minutes to hand it over to Don, and I support the petition, because you gotta remember, there are older people living there, and their life depends on you to have a hard-surface road to get in and out. So I guess we won't be able to go this summer to our beach house because of my husband's health.
Ms. Barcroft, your profession was bus driving, correct?
Yes, for almost 30 years for the city of Chesapeake. So everybody thought I was crazy, but I retired.
Well, I want to apologize, because I was one of those kids that drove you to retirement.
Yeah, well, thank you, and I hope, yeah, and I hope you do consider us old folks in Carova that need that hard-packed surface.
Thank you, Ms. Barcroft. Don Huffnagle?
Good evening. My name's Don Huffnagle, 403 Brent Road, and here we are again. I was here two weeks ago, and we expressed a lot of concern about the proposed driving ordinance on the beach. But there was some conversation that involved somebody making a comment that the communities were made aware, and that this information was posted for people to see. I've been working on this since November the 2nd. I cannot find one single person that sat in on any committee meeting in the community that had anything to say or input about this driving ordinance. What concerns me is, there are a lot of safety issues in that sand that I'm not so sure that what we're asking for is the right thing to do. Example, there are certain sections in there, there is not 50 feet at high tide. The toe of the dune line is going to be known by who? How are we going to train these people that are coming down there, driving on the beach, and it's not the locals? They're the ones that are getting stuck. They're the ones that are going to be out in their cars in that thick sand, all over the place, digging sand, trying to get out, and people are trying to manipulate, move in between them. I think we're having a bigger issue by just not tabling this and letting us, let us really look at, what are we trying to do as a county? We're here to support the county, but we don't know what the objective is here. We know that we want to close the beach off for safety. I get that. There's not been an incident on that hard-packed surface at all, not one. There has been one on the high dune. So we're taking a place that's had a record of something happening and putting all this traffic in there. July 6, there was a study done, traffic off the ramp to the beach. 1,136 vehicles came off that ramp between 6:30 and 8:30 at night, it's a posted study. That traffic is going to be put into that two-and-a-half-mile stretch, and it's not 6:30 to 8:30 at night, it's probably going to be 900 of it, it's going to be like that. The toe of the dune is not marked. We don't know, if I'm going south and another car's coming north and I'm on the toe of the dune, who blinks? Who turns right, who turns left? Heavy vehicles on that toe of that dune sometimes are slanted a little bit, depending on where they're at on the dune. If they have to turn quickly by chance and get, that wheel gets driven down in that sand, that vehicle could overturn. So I think there's a lot more safety issues driving in that two-and-a-half, and we're not saying that we don't want to try and do something about safety, but it's not going to be safer. And I know you can pull it at any time, but we need to have something happen to make that, rather than table it tonight. Let the community, let us help, let us get involved, and try to understand what we're trying to achieve, because I keep hearing we want to restrict it, but I don't think that's going to restrict people feeling more safe. It's not going to keep them from coming. More people are going to come, which is okay, there's nothing wrong with that, we want more people to come, but we want to be safe. So I'm going to hand, I hope we take the time to read the petition, because there's a lot of really good comments in here from people that really care about Currituck Beach, about what we have as a community that the country would love to have. Protect that beach. Don't let it grow so far, so crazy, that it's just impossible. So there's a lot of good remarks in here, a lot of comments that we probably should read. 242, yeah, 242 of these are from North Carolina, which means there's another 100 from, somebody was in here from New Mexico, expressing the concern about driving on the beach, so I have some additions and stuff. It was 189 on the 6, 321 down. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question for you, Mr. Huffnagle. All the emails we've gotten about this, there haven't been that many, but they're negative, let us get involved, let us do this. I haven't heard anyone suggest anything in any of those emails, other than, don't do it, because there's going to be people getting stuck, cars catching on fire, which is a pretty rare occurrence. And so my question to you is, while you're up here, do you have a suggestion for making it safer for people down there?
Well, I guess my response to you would be this. We never knew what the objective is. If you're saying it's safety, you're, we're causing one unsafe condition for another. Those tracks coming off the ramp, you know.
I know.
Vertical versus horizontal is devastating trying to go through that.
Well, that's a normal intersection.
It, but.
On a busy road, anywhere.
But we're, but we're condensing the traffic into that.
Right.
It's not a matter of, can I get on it and go up it today and do it safely? It's a matter of, is that much, and keep in mind, alcohol, at the end of the day.
I'm still waiting on a. Mr. Huffnagle, the question was, do you have a solution?
I said, but I don't know what the, we don't know what your objective is.
All right, well, you said it. You stated it. The objective from day one has been public safety. With, speaking with other commissioners, this conversation has gone on for 12 years, and nothing has been done, nothing. Public meetings, barbecues, turkey cook-offs, you name it, it's happened. How many countless bottles of liquor, how many countless beers have been drank over it? Nothing has happened, nothing. Time to take action. It's time to take action.
I would attend to agree.
And this is just the beginning, Mr. Huffnagle. This is just the beginning.
That, I don't know what "just the beginning" means, I mean.
It's just the beginning of public safety on the 4x4.
Well, I'm for that, but when you.
Through parking permits, through limiting use, you can't do it all at once, you have to start somewhere. We will monitor this situation, we have a commissioner that drives that beach day in and day out. He works up there, his vehicles have to drive through the same sand you do. It's a burden on him.
That's the danger in that sand, with all that traffic in there. I'm only saying that I have not been able to find, I'm not saying that it's not been something in the past.
Please keep your comments in the audience to yourself, please.
And I'm not saying that.
Right.
What I'm saying is, I couldn't find anybody that said that they were part of, or sat down in some kind of discussion of what we could do better to make that be safe.
In the last, in the last two weeks, no, maybe not, but in the last 12 years, there's a lot of them up there, and there's a lot of them in this room.
I think the comment was made at the last meeting that there was a public discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Huffnagle.
You're welcome.
Moving on to, if I could, Heidi or James White?
Good evening. My first question is, I'm speaking. I, my husband and I have been a resident for Knott's Island for 18 years. We chose to move to Knott's Island for the serenity, we're both from Virginia Beach, and the seclusion, I do give it that. We are taxpayers, and we, of course, living in Virginia Beach are a little spoiled with the services at least, dump service, pickup, and nice roads, dogs with leashes, but when we moved to Knott's Island, we kind of got what we were getting into, that's kind of what we wanted. We wanted to be left alone, we wanted to be in an environment where it was quiet and secluded. What has happened, 2014, month of January, in the middle of winter, about two weeks after I lost a child.
Take your time, take your time.
I had a neighbor come up to my window because it was about 3:00 AM, I wasn't sleeping at the time very well for a couple months, banging on my window screaming, "Please call 911, my house is on fire." So I directed, I was mentoring a child in one of my bedrooms, and I had my husband somewhere else. I directed the child to call 911, I directed my husband to get a hose from one side of the house, and I asked the child to get another hose and go to the neighbors in that direction of the side of my house. We had a firefighter living next door at the time, paid for Charbo, I don't remember where he was, he was not, we went banging on his door, he wasn't home. His son, I believe, was a volunteer. When the firefighters showed up from Knott's Island, we all stood and watched this home burn to the ground. We had our hoses ready because we were going to try to help. My husband and I both looked at the firefighters, volunteers, standing around, and they said, we're like, what are, we can't do anything, we're volunteers, we have to wait for the paid firefighters to get here. So we all stood there and watched the house burn to the ground, and I said to them, I said, "Well, would you mind at least hosing off the side of my house that is 100 feet from this trailer that had a propane tank until the paid firefighters can get here?" The man lost his house, nobody was able to save it, because we didn't have a paid firefighter show up on the scene at the, in time to do any kind of of anything. So my thought on the volunteer and the paid firefighters, I'm just now coming to privy on a random Facebook post, "Oh, we're, we didn't reach a contract." Well, was anybody going to let the residents know that something needed to be done? Now, I believe y'all are going on a daily, until a contract is reached, I don't know exactly the logistics of it. I have heard that the county allot a certain amount of money every year towards the fire station, volunteers, and that's all we got. We don't have paid firefighters. So if you want to give me a little input, I'm just, you know, there's a couple houses during, if your house goes burn, gets on fire in the day, you're S out of luck, because the volunteers have to have a job during the day, and they can't do anything.
Let me just make a comment, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying.
All from experience.
Well, I am a volunteer firefighter for Currituck County.
All from experience.
I'm a business owner, and I've attended and got my yearly training with the volunteer firefighters. I can drive apparatus, I'm an interior firefighter, and I have never gone to a fire scene where anybody has said you had to wait for a paid firefighter. We attack it immediately, when we, when I show up, we grab the hoses and we attack the fire.
I'm just saying, my husband is here.
I understand, I understand, I don't know where that comment comes from.
You're by the fire, you're right across the street, you were here in two seconds, why can't you?
We're firefighters, we're trained, when we show up, we start attacking the fire, so we're just paid fire, waiting for paid firefighters, I have no idea where that's coming from.
Dan, can you want to come up here?
Was the truck actually there?
You need to come up to the podium if you're going to speak. We were just like.
Was the truck actually there?
Yeah.
So they, so they brought a fire truck to the fire.
The volunteers were four.
There was two trucks, there was two trucks there. I had pneumonia at the time, and I'm dragging a hose around the house, I couldn't hardly breathe or walk. She has a hose, we're spraying the house down, and the boy is sitting there in the field, and I said, "Can you put wood on the house?" We can't do that until paid people get here. And I looked at him and I said, "Why are you even here then?" Literally, that's what he said to me.
Yeah, I don't know why they would say that, because.
Well, it's a little late for that now.
I understand that, I just, that's, that's the first I've heard anybody ever say that.
That's going to be the way it is.
Well, that's the first I've heard that.
Okay, well, we weren't going to argue in the other time, but I said, and, okay, the volunteers, maybe he's new, but do you not have the wherewithal to hose it down?
He said, "We're legally, we cannot do this until a paid person gets here."
Absolutely.
I said, "Okay, I understand that." But you just.
Alls I know is, I'm a volunteer, and we pull hoses and we start fighting right away.
We were blowing northeast at night, 15 to 20 at the side of my house, and I was concerned because there's a significant shrub line, and there's a propane tank there. I knew that the trailer was going to go up, I knew it was going to burn very quick.
Oh, no, you have your right to be concerned, absolutely.
And they just, you know, and they got out safely, but at the concern at the time was, can you at least do something for mine? And he said, "We cannot."
Can you explain water, well, they.
And I can't answer why that was, comment was made, have no idea.
I'm just telling you the circumstance and how it happens.
Thank you.
Our take on things is, we really would like, and I'm not really sure, but now we're going to take a stand, and we're going to follow this closely, what funds you as a county, from what I've heard, are giving to these volunteers who can only do so much when there's a fire, that's what was our personal experience, can we not have one or two paid firefighters on our island? If we have to pay a little bit more, we're going to do fundraisers, turkey shoots, Easter egg, all, where is the, it behooves me what's going on now that I find out really what's going on. I've heard there's paid firefighters, and they're from, some of the volunteers are from Virginia Beach, and they want credation, accreditation, or the word, and they get their equipment's all new, we have a brand-new fire station, we have everything we need, but we don't have paid firefighters on our island to protect us.
Miss, we hear you, we hear you.
It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing.
This is what we're having conversations about, and we know that, we know the situation over there, and this is something we're taking into account this evening, and we will be discussing.
My last, right, my last problem is, the contractual, actually, we know where there was a lapse, we found that out by Facebook, but they've got a bulletin board in front of that fire station. Why wasn't there someone to say, "We need, we need citizens, we need help, can y'all please come to this meeting, can we cooperate here, can we come to someone or say, because we're having a lap, the county and the fire, something's not connecting here?" And we, I found out by accident. I didn't, I saw there was a turkey shoot, but I didn't see there's a contractual lapse. That's very concerning to me.
Ma'am, you can be assured that we have had a tremendous amount of conversation about this in the last two weeks. Chief Melton and Deputy, our deputy chief is here tonight. We are going to have this conversation, and we will get to the bottom of it and come up with some resolution, but.
Did it have to come to this, though? Did it have to come to?
Apparently it did.
This is, this is public comment, and this is your opportunity to bring things to our attention, and we appreciate it. Again, you know, we're not going to resolve this here in public tonight.
Right, oh, no, no, absolutely, right.
But if you will give us an opportunity, we are going to, that's, that's part of our agenda tonight, is have the conversation, so.
And if the contract wasn't met, then can we be made a privy at the public, say, we're having issues.
We're going to come up with some solutions.
We will have a public state, we will have a public statement.
We will have something to come out, and, and thank you for coming over from Knott's Island.
Thank you for sharing your story as well.
And sharing your, your experience.
Thank you very much. If I would call TJ English.
How's it going? My name's TJ English, I'm from 6479 Knott's Island Road, but I'm not going to talk about the fire stuff tonight. I wanted to talk about the driving ordinance. I also have property on 2181 Teal Road and some other properties over there. Just wanted to share a couple of concerns I had. Me and my brother-in-law are builders over there, and some of the issues, I think, with the driving, I mean, I know the fire trucks and stuff like that, you said police escorts, but like the delivery trucks, it's going to take wear and tear on their vehicles also. And then also, I wanted to ask about waste management, you know, because the dump, and it's especially high dump time during the rental season, you know, in the summer times we are talking about closing that down, and they already have problems getting stuck on the low beach already, so I'm only assuming they're going to have even more trouble with the high beach, and they usually try to go by the tide, but, you know, they don't go after 5:00, you know what I mean? And with the police, I know y'all said a police escort and all that stuff with everything else, so I was just kind of curious if you're going to include that with the waste management stuff, because I know like during the summer, the trash can pile up as it is right now, and if they can't make it down the beach at certain times, because they can't get down because of the traffic stuff down lower, you know what I mean, with the chairs and everything. And then also, I just wanted to know who was kind of policing this stuff, like, I know everything's from 9:00 to 5:00, but after that, are the police going to come down? Because I know a lot of times, like I drive the beach all the time, too, for work and everything else, and I'm there later some days, depending on what my workload is. Are the police going to go down and make sure, you know, tell everybody, hey, now they can drive down on this lower area? And I just think there's like a general, going to be like a general confusion, you know, like, when you first get on the beach, you can drive, you can't drive on the lower area, but then all of a sudden, this magic line of 17 is going to change all that, and it's going to be kind of confusing. I know y'all said something about signs last time, but there's tons of signs at the ramp right now that they don't read, like, where to park, how fast to go, don't stop here to air up and air down, which they do anyway. You know, so, and I am going to have some suggestions for you, Mr. White. I know you guys are talking about safety, so in my mind, it makes more sense for safety to have those driving areas where you're only going to north, like, I'm totally against it anyway about changing the driving, but if you were going to implement something, maybe do it in those refuge areas where there's not kids or people coming down, because the only instance I've heard of an accident where, you know, on the high beach is, I mean, course fire, trucks getting on fire and all that. fire and all that stuff, but a kid came down the dune line and actually ran into the truck. The truck didn't hit him. He ran into the truck. And that's the only one I've really heard about, but, so maybe that refuge areas could be like the safe haven, just because there's no people coming from the, you know, from the houses, 'cause there's no houses there, obviously. But another suggestion would be maybe write more tickets to the tourists. I mean, I don't feel like we should have to pay the price when the problem really is there's people coming here. You know what I mean? And I, I mean, I work there and I, they, you know, they pay for everything I have, obviously, but maybe, you know, if they don't air down, they get stuck. Write them a ticket so they won't do that again. You know what I mean? If they have their beach chairs out there in the way of the driving, write them a ticket. You know, there, nothing speaks more than hitting that wallet while they're there. And I mean, if they don't come back, then, you know, that's their loss. You know what I mean? Alls they gotta do is follow the rules that are already in place. So, I have to say. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. English. That's currently all I have signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
Mr. Campbell, I just have a question. The gentleman just mentioned waste management and Mr. Scanlon, do we have hours of operation that waste management go to the sites? Are, are there certain hours that they dump? I mean, I, I know like businesses...
We, we do not have hours or restrictions on when they access sites, no.
Okay, so we, we don't have a timeframe of...
Do not.
Of when, okay.
We do not.
I'm just curious on that. Thank you.
So, there's a couple of things I'd like to touch on that people brought up while they were talking this evening. I, I, I find it hard to believe that if you're driving down the beach to recreate on the beach, you would drive into Swan Beach to go through the neighborhood to get down the beach, which was a point that someone brought up this evening, that they fear that if we do this, if we do this traffic shift, that they'll end up coming through the neighborhood. I, I just, I, I have a hard time with that. The three ramps that are in, in Swan Beach, two of them have pretty good views out of them. The worst one is milepost 17, hands down, and it's also the least used. Mostly, it's just guys that have to climb the hill that go up there because it's, it's just not a good ramp to utilize. So, the biggest ramp coming in and out of Swan Beach is 16 and a half Canary Lane. And, so, just some of that just doesn't quite jive with me in, in a common sense. Over the past two summers, we've watched this beach develop in such a way that tidal pools were in the middle of the beach and you had cars between the tidal pool and the ocean, thus not leaving much room for us to drive up the beach anyway. And almost all of us that live up there use the high beach. It wasn't bad. You had a tidal pool that created a wet area with packed sand west of the, the tidal pools in between the dune, the area we're talking about. It wasn't till almost August or maybe even end of August that we actually had enough sand pushed up that it allowed us to drive down there. And there's so many people, you can't hardly do it anyway. So, we've, we've been, we've in essence been doing this for the last two years. And as far as waste management goes, I've never seen them out there in the middle of the day. They always come up in the morning, grab those things early. They plan it on low tides and they just get it done. You can imagine them trying to drive a trash truck up and down the beach with people all over the place. It's just not gonna happen. So, if they do, it's probably an extraordinary As far as police go, we talked to them. This is, this is, this came from the Sheriff's Department. I didn't think this up. Okay, like I said, they've been talking about this for a decade. And, and it's, she's our public safety officer and wants this to happen and she wanted the entire beach to be done from sunrise to sunset. And there was no way in heck that that could happen. So, we compromised and we have a, a test program, if you will, I guess. And I felt it was important that if we're gonna do this, at the very least, we should allow people to go to and from work, to travel up and down the beach for a normal nine-to-five type job where you gotta be to work before nine and home after five. And, you know, during the summer, building slows way down. I know you guys are doing more during the summer, but not like the, it's, it's, it's not that prevalent. And again, you usually see the delivery trucks coming up the beach in the morning. They don't wanna, they don't wanna do anything either. And, so that was just a few things that, that I felt were important to highlight that people brought up, that I just, I just really don't see it being that big of an issue. So, that's it. Thank you.
Was there someone else that wanted to speak? Someone was raising their hand back there?
Yeah, it was TJ.
Yes, sir. You can come back up.
The waste management in the, like any delivery truck that I've seen usually goes with the tide so they can catch that low beach. So, I'm just, my point was, you know, let's say the tide falls at 10. They're not, you know, are you gonna have a police escort every time somebody wants to deliver stuff or waste management?
I've rarely been out there and seen them out there that late. Pretty rare.
Well, I mean, I know I order stuff on those every day from Kinsville and, you know what I mean? They come at all different hours, so...
This won't do us any good, so...
Okay. Yeah, no, I understand.
Just let go. Thank you.
Oh, Mary, and Mr. Hall had brought up signage and sign, people have talked about that. So, today I had Eileen Worth come over and meet with me and Chief Atolus facilitates a lot of stuff for us over there. And we rode around and looked at what signs we have, how, how, how good you could view them. And I know no one pays attention to the no-stopping, the 50 no-stopping signs at the ramp. So, one of the thought processes in this and with the air down ordinance we passed was, where do we put these guys and how do we, how do we impart the information to it? And we have a couple of digital billboards. You guys saw the one we had out there last year, Memorial Day weekend or Labor Day weekend, we had it out there and the phones blew up because it was working too good. People were stopping all over the place. So, we know that if we pass that information to them, it works. So, now we have to identify an area to actually make that work. And so, we're working through that now to get them off the road before they get to the ramp. And when they come back off the beach, we've identified a potential area, we have to work out a deal to have air stations for these tourists to air back up again. So, a lot of the concerns, I think, with people getting stuck or car fires or, or what have you are gonna be self-remiting when we get the information out to get these people aired down. We're always gonna have problems, you know, nothing is perfect, but I, I just, I just have to say, there's, if there's nothing ventured, there's nothing gained. And this is not to, to, to hurt anyone or, or do anything like that, but we have to recognize the number of people that are coming here, moving into the area and, and the, the volume of traffic. We're gonna have to do something. We all agree on that. And we're willing to unwind it. If it becomes a total and complete mess, then all of us here are willing to unwind this pretty quickly. As I said, we can have a meeting in 48 hours and retract a, an ordinance, but more importantly, the Sheriff's Department can just stop enforcing it. We can pull the signs up in a day. No big deal. So, part of that was meeting with Eileen was also getting a better sign package on the beach and, and understanding whether seeing what they're not seeing. The milepost marker signs are this big. You can't see those things in the daytime, let alone any other time. So, doing things like bigger milepost markers, intersections, keep off the dune. You know, we passed ordinance last year or this year to keep people off the dune to make it illegal. Well, the signs are this big. No one can see those things. And so, we need to do a better information of informing the public about staying off the dunes. Everyone's talked about this one child that got ran over on the dune and, or coming off the dune. You know, accidents are gonna happen, but I, I, I just, you know, I, I've watched my son out there get nearly hit, I don't know how many times over the 10 years I've lived out there. And it's, it's just high time that we did something to make it safer for people. You talk about drinking. Well, what about drinking and riding where the kids are playing in the street essentially, which is what we're doing right now? Is that a good idea? Really? I'd much rather have two people get in a car accident with seat belts on, surrounded by a vehicle than hit a kid on the beach. So, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone that came out and, and your time. And while I have your attention, since a couple of people commented from Knott's Island about the fire district, one thing was brought up and this is totally separate, Ward's Road. It was brought to my attention that there's some speeding issues out there. We have contacted DOT and they have to do a little rig and roll behind the scenes, so we're gonna get you guys some speed limit signs out there. And I just wanted you to know that was happening. I got some information on it. So, while I had you here, I figured I'd pass that information to you. So, thank you all.
Bob, I have one question for you. You know, I've been down to the off-ramp area many times and don't pay attention what milepost I'm at because I'm usually going all the way north, but between 16 and 17 mileposts, you live close to that area, correct?
I have a 17.
Okay. How many ramps are there between 16 and 17 and a half?
Three.
Okay. So, the more dangerous one is the, the furthest north, it's 17 and a half, correct?
It, it, it is in that you have to come down a hill and enter the traffic lane, but it is by far the least used ramp. Everybody usually comes out, at least all the locals do, and the tourists figured out, just past that ramp, it's 17.1, there is a, another cut-through. And it comes out into a bowled-out area that's actually, no one drives in. It's just kind of a weird little thing, the way it sits. But anyway, that ramp is easier to get in and out because it's, it's much lower. 17 is usually, is locally, you know, Rufus' Hill and it's a pretty good-sized hill there to go over.
So, for, between 16 and 17 then, excluding the 17 and a half one, is it possible that we can bring that ordinance back to 16?
Well, we can do anything we want.
And then, you know, because if those three ramps are, are three of the most trafficked ramps, then moving it, moving it south, our ordinance, as far as changing the driving, would that be, it would still give an opportunity for people to park at the foreshore, get the traffic in, in a roundabout area, but shorten that to the 16 milepost versus going all the way to 17?
Well, that, I mean, we can do anything we want. The, when, in the discussion that happened, the reason we talked about 17 is because the houses stopped there. So, now that's, the people just stopped because there's no homes to rent and it's a natural, easy area to switch the traffic pattern right there. So, these, this was the highest concentration of people too. And from 16 to 17, you have the neighborhood. So, you've got your highest concentration of people out there from the rental properties plus the, the beachgoers that show up for the day. So, in effect, that's where you really, I mean, almost want it more because that's where all the homes are.
I'm just struggling with, with those being the heavily trafficked ramps in, in my fear of people coming over the ramps, back and forth, into the, into the traffic with, with the heavily pedestrians coming over the dunes.
There's no, so there, you got a couple of oceanfront homes there and you, you don't have a lot of pedestrian traffic in that no one walks out to the beach unless you're in an oceanfront house. You just don't see it happen. So, and like in the last meeting, you, you mentioned pedestrian walkways over the ramps. People just don't do it. They leave their house all their junk.
Not necessarily under the ramps, but more under, over the dunes or, you know, so we have public access walkways.
Well, they have access.
Now, you, people are driving out in the high dunes right now.
They're doing, we are doing it already. I mean, we are not asking anything that we are not doing currently. And, and so, I get your point. I understand where you're going with it. But milepost 16 and a half, for instance, is flat. So, you don't have a hill. You have good visibility. Milepost 16 is on an incline, but it's back from the beach. So, when they come over the dune, they actually have a great line of sight in both directions to who's coming and who's going. And those two ramps really don't change much. So, you know, like I said, the two busier ramps that we have in Swan Beach are currently, and that could change, obviously, it's sand, but are in pretty good shape for, for line of sight. And so, I just don't see it being a big deal and, and, and any driver knows instinctively to stop when you come up to an intersection. I mean, now, we can't fix stupid people, right? We can't help that, so, but...
Well, and I know that we're in public comment right now, so we'll save some more discussion when we get into that item, but I, I just...
Okay. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak to public comment? Yes, ma'am. Briefly, please.
Yeah, very briefly. 17 and a half is the last legal ramp. The other one that he's talking about, about 17.1, is in the middle of Freeman's property and he could block that off at any point.
Driveway.
It's his, it's his driveway to the houses. He hasn't bucked us about using that because a lot of times 17 and a half is, is impossible.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
One more quick question. Are you at liberty to tell me what is the yearly budget that is allotted to the fire department for operational causes or...
Mr. Scanlon?
I can get that information. Off the top of my head, I do not know, but I certainly can get that information for you.
Can you?
A little over $200,000.
Okay. And that's currently being given every year?
Two fifteen, 215, $215,000.
And that's being given to our, our, our fire station every year?
The volunteer, the volunteer fire department has...
Who is not paid. The volunteers aren't paid, so...
That's correct.
Where is that, equipment, training, certification? Where does $200,000 a year go?
You, you, you'll need to, I mean, you'll need to talk to the volunteer fire department about how they utilize this.
Ms. White, if I can, this is really a public comment section.
Okay, no, I'm just curious.
And I really need to move along.
Okay.
We are more than happy to get you any information you need. Please, please leave your name and, and number and information.
And Chief, Chief Melton is right here. Chief Melton, raise your hand. Get your contact information to him and to our county manager and between the two of them, they can get you every answer that you want in very much detail. Thank you.
And with that, I will close the public comment section. Moving on. Mr. Scanlon? Moving on to administrative reports. Zach Miller and George, George Arbogast have been kind enough to give us a presentation on the Hatch Program. If you could come on up.
Hello. How are you?
Good.
We're gonna talk business, good things hopefully. Really excited to tell you guys about a program that we implemented in, in Currituck at the end of the summer and is open for every business that is already in existence in Currituck or thinking about growing. We call it 1004. Anyone interested can go to 1004.com, spelled out like this, but then slash Currituck NC and they can get free access to this platform. When I, when I started my first business, I thought I was like this guy and I thought I was invincible. What I found out real quickly is that I'm not Superman and that really got really tough to, to own a business. I started asking a lot of my friends who are business owners what they would do when they were in tough situations and a lot of them were kinda like me. They went back to, "I'm just Superman. I'm gonna get through it." But I learned that it's, it's tough and the one thing that everyone in the world has is 24 hours in the day. And so, finding the right material, the resources, the people to get help from can, can be a challenge. What we often find across the country is that programs are developed for the simbas of the world, the one-in-a-million's. Well, if the majority of businesses in the country are not the simbas, there needs to be platforms for them. And so, we developed a platform called 1004 to be able to help that. Here's the lightbulb moment. The problem is that small business owners are struggling to find the resources necessary by people who actually have done them, not actually just read about it in a book and are now telling you how to do it themselves. And so, we put together an on-demand innovative platform to be able to answer questions on demand through a couple of different things. And so, it, it has an on-demand video library similar to Netflix, if you will. So, instead of searching for the, the best documentary or the next TV show, you would search for a specific topic in your business. Everything is available 24/7. And we have over 100 curated experts of people who have actually been there and done that. Some are business owners, some are just experts in that specific field. So, instead of going to your lawyer and asking, or asking them a question, getting a bill for $600, we've paid lawyers to give us their 30 or 40 best questions or questions that they're asked a lot. And now we can get those answers along with 12 other different topics as well. We also have a support group that can be done in three or four different ways, a Facebook group, a forum, online chat and video chats as well so that 24/7 access, people can get the questions and answers that they want. Oftentimes, things are very time-sensitive, so it's 2 o'clock on a Tuesday, you're running your business, but you have a question. You can't go to a, an event that is talking about the topic of your choice. How do you get that answer? In many cases, you don't. You have to go, hopefully, sign up for that thing six months later. We wanna solve that problem, make it easy for the business owners and the people thinking about starting a business in Currituck, get that answer when they need it. We also have step-by-step guides and business courses where those business owners or their staffs can get the information they need on demand, along with editable worksheets and downloadable resources. So, when they have specific questions about their accounting or hiring someone, what, what sheet do they give that employee, they're able to... They're able to present that to those, we're able to present that to them so that they can have a template or a guide to start with. Here's my contact information, but anyone in Kirtuk has the ability to check it out. It's 1004.com backslash KirtukNC. Free access for that. We've been working with Larry and the team here at Kirtuk, and we hope that every business owner, small or large, can be a part of this. And we just want to let you guys know that this is available to all the businesses here, and we're excited to continue to help grow you guys as well. So any questions you guys might have for me?
Couple, if I'm a business and I happen to use your thing, the 1004 Kirtuk, is there a record down the road that I can look at, and I can say that 20 businesses used you this year, or five used you, or...
Yep. So we have a, there is a quick onboard process where we learn about who that person is. Simply, it's their name and email, and then we provide that to the economic development staff here. We've been in talks to get more information, to figure out what you guys might want there, but those are still things that we're discussing at this point. But we do know who signed up from Kirtuk, yes.
Say I'm a business, and I haven't had any problems, but I want to come on and log in with you guys, so you're there in case I get your periodical information that you may send out. Can I do that even if I'm not asking any questions?
Yes. Yeah, not everyone asks questions, only the ones that are, that have that immediately.
Sounds good.
But thousands of people will get on there and never ask a question, but they'll get the answers whenever they need them.
And this is a program that the county contracted with you? I mean, it was...
Yes, so I started my business up in Norfolk, six or seven years ago, and throughout time, developed it into this, and have had a relationship with Larry. And as we grew the outside-of-Norfolk platform, we picked up the phone and said, hey, we think this is something that would be good here.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, currently, right now, do you have approximately how many local businesses are on there?
In Kirtuk, several dozen are on. This is one of the ways that we're reaching out. It's been in several emails, social media, we're contacting people as well. But our main goal here tonight is to let everyone in Kirtuk know that this is a resource that you have. It just went out on the flyer to 12,000 businesses as well, and, you know, if people don't know about it, they can't get access to it. So, we're doing our job by getting out there saying, hey, here's this thing, let us help you.
And back to your thing, you just said 1,200 flyers went out to businesses?
12,000?
12,000? Okay. It went in that, I didn't know it was some separate flyer.
Yeah. So we also have flyers that we've created that, here, they have printed out where someone that might meet with Larry will be able to receive that. It's also in all of his emails at the end of that. People can sign up there, their social media, it's in several different places. We also permit it as well. So anything that you guys can do to help promote it as well, it's a resource that is available to your businesses, so if you're meeting...
There's no cost to the business when he contacts you?
Correct.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, I'm trying to think the negative side of this.
There is no negative side.
And for those that may not know, Larry Lombardi is our economic development director, so he is the partner that you're working with, is to our economic development director.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Moving on, old business, an ordinance of the Kirtuk County Board of Commissioners amending Sections 10-57, 10-62, 10-63, 10-64, and 10-129 of the Kirtuk County Code of Ordinances regulating driving and certain uses on the county's ocean beach. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, this matter is on for your second reading tonight. It was adopted at your last meeting, but under the general statutes of North Carolina, an ordinance may not be adopted at its first reading unless it receives a unanimous vote. That, of course, did not occur at the last meeting, and so it's before you tonight for a second reading, and it may be passed tonight by a simple majority vote of the board. It's my intention just to go over the several modifications that were made from Commissioner White's motion at that last meeting, unless the board would like me to go through the entire ordinance again.
Modifications, it's fine, thank you.
All right. I would further board to page two of the proposed ordinance, line three, and the modifications from the last meeting occur in what is Section 10-62 of the Code of Ordinances, blocking the foreshore. And you have before you a graphic which represents the modifications, what the ordinance will require if adopted. First of all, in line four, paragraph A, the ordinance would continue to provide that no person may block the foreshore in a manner that would prohibit vehicular traffic along the foreshore, but there is an exception, so that a person would be able to block the foreshore between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, in that area, one and one-half miles north of the North Beach Access Ramp to milepost 17. That would allow for persons to park on the hard-packed sand and recreate within that area without being in violation of the county ordinance. That also leads then...
Excuse me. I know Ms. Overstreet mentioned that we have in there Memorial Day?
Yes.
That Memorial Day is Monday, so are we meaning for it to start on Monday or that weekend, like...
No, the way it is written, it would start on Memorial Day, but you can certainly modify that.
Yeah, it was just an easy target to pick, I guess we talked about. I mean, we could certainly make it, make it the preceding Friday before Memorial Day weekend, or something to that effect.
I think that needs to be corrected.
That was a great point, Ms. Overstreet. Thank you.
Right.
Okay. Then leading into paragraph B at line eight, there already is, well, has been a requirement that motor vehicles be parked what is, in essence, the center or middle of the beach. And so, that language has been modified to say what has been the practice, which is that all vehicles parked on the beach strand should be parked in the middle of the beach strand, such that vehicular traffic, and this is language that we already have, may pass without obstruction adjacent to the dune line, and of course, traffic would be able to also move adjacent to the water's edge with, again, the motor vehicles parked in the middle of the beach. But there's an exception with regard to driving adjacent to the water's edge, and that, again, is between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM from, and I'll take it that you'd want to amend that as well, the Friday before Memorial Day to Labor Day, in an area extending one and one-half miles north of the North Beach Access Ramp to milepost 17. And that there would be no lawn chairs or any other item that would be blocking the foreshore in any manner that restricts public safety and emergency response vehicular movement in a north-south direction along the water's edge. So that would require persons, if they are recreating during the time period allowed on the hard-packed sand, it is incumbent upon them, in a requirement, that if an emergency vehicle is on the way, coming toward them, they are to move themselves and whatever else they may have within that hard-packed area back so that the emergency vehicles may pass through freely. Moving on to paragraph C at line 21, this provides that, notwithstanding the two previous sections, no vehicle shall travel in an area extending one and one-half miles north of the North Beach Access Ramp to milepost 17 in a north-south direction between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM from, I guess you want to change that also to Friday before Memorial Day to Labor Day, except in an area that's bounded on the west by the toe of the dune line and extending eastward to the middle of the beach strand. So that's, that, again, is during that time period, motor vehicles may only move up and down the beach in that specified area, dune line to middle of the beach. There is an exception, that requirement would not apply to public safety and emergency response vehicles. So, public safety and emergency response vehicles may always travel either on the high beach or down the hard-packed sand, whichever the emergency responders deem to be best for their response to a call. So with that, those are the only modifications in that section that were made from that which was presented to you at your last meeting. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. McCree, while we got you mic'd up, a couple people have asked if I need to recuse myself from voting on this, and I guess I would ask that you enlighten us and the general public as to what would constitute a commissioner having to step back from a vote on something.
One of the general statutes, a commissioner is required to vote, as the statutes say, on all matters, except upon questions involving their own financial interest or official conduct. Certainly, acting on a general police power ordinance does not affect those two areas, and again, you would be required to vote on this ordinance. I do not see there's any conflict of interest whatsoever for a commissioner, just because you happen to travel the beach daily, or because you live there or work there, would have any reason not to meet the statutory requirement to vote on this matter.
Okay. Thank you. If I can, a couple points, questions. Basically, this is for 100 days, for eight hours a day. It's 2.2 miles. In the very beginning, we stated that the reason for this is public safety. I firmly believe that this is for public safety. I have family that lives in the 4x4, there's a commissioner that lives in the 4x4. This ordinance is not intended to hurt anyone in any way, shape, or form, or otherwise. And we're getting to a point in the 4x4 beach, I enjoyed it 25 years ago. I used to go sleep on the beach. It was a great time. Unfortunately, we've been found out, and everybody wants to come see us, and they're going to continue to come see us, and more and more are going to come see us. If we don't get it under control now, five years down the road, it'll be too late. We have to take those steps now to prepare for the future. As commissioners, that's what we're charged with. We're charged to plan for the future, and that's what I believe every commissioner up here is willing to do and will do every single day, just for clarity on that. There is no benefit here for anyone. I enjoy the beach just as much as anybody else does. And really, this is the beginning. Mr. Huffnagle, you know, we're going to have a parking permit this year. That in itself is going to keep some folk from just parking on the beach. That's the first step into taking our beach back, into controlling what happens on our beach. Probably next summer, we'll have a parking pass. That's something we'll be discussing at our retreat, and they aren't going to be free. So, if people want to come enjoy the beach, it's going to cost them. That's going to deter them. And the idea isn't to deter tourists. Tourists pay our bills. Yeah, tourists come up there, and they go, they have a good time, they don't spend a bunch of money there, but boy, they went and had a great time, and they sure are going to tell their friend, and their friend's going to come rent a house somewhere. And that's how this beach grows. And that's how we, all of us here enjoy low taxes, great services, and great facilities. It's all hinged on that, so we understand that. We want everyone to have a pleasurable experience when they come to the Outer Banks. That's what we're about. We're about a good time, good people, friendly people, and a great experience. Go home, tell someone, come back, and that's what we're trying to achieve here. This board is not a set-it-and-forget-it board. We are a very involved Board of Commissioners. We will be keeping a very close eye on what's going on up there. Again, Mr. White gets to drive it every day. Why, I have no idea. But we're going to see it every day. I have family that lives there. I'll get feedback from family up there. If I have to go there, I'll go there a time or two. So, we're going to pay attention to it. Don't think we're going to just forget about it. Understand that. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We're not afraid to admit that. Please bear with us. Times, they are changing, and we have to be prepared for those times, and we have to take the steps to be prepared for those times. Signage of ramps and accesses, everyone has touched on it, we will have adequate signage at those ramps. We will have adequate signage at the air-up and air-down stations. The air-up and air-down stations will be in place before Memorial Day. That will happen. That is not, oh, we're going to do it, and then it doesn't happen. It's going to happen. Some issues, some folks mentioned some issues about, well, where does parking stop and where does it start? Well, the, you know, we've had talks with the Sheriff's Department in bringing on more staff, bringing on more vehicles, better vehicles for the Sheriff's Department, to help folks, you know, not to be police, but to help them. And that's what we're there for. You know, ma'am, you got to back up a little bit. Ma'am, you got to back up a little bit more, and that's what we're going to be doing.
What about the misters? You can't be mad.
Well, y'all are usually the trouble, so...
Yeah, make the decisions.
At least the start of it.
We'll put our stuff here.
If I can touch my notes real quick, I apologize. Again, there was, you know, some concern about all the traffic being in a two-mile stretch. Well, everyone's going to pile up in a two-mile stretch. Well, that isn't true. I'm going to go a little bit further. I'm going to get out of the crowd. So where there's a crowd, people are going to go just a little bit further north. We're trying to create a safe zone for people to come and have a good time. If they want to be in the crowd, they can. If they want to go a little further and get by themselves, they'll be able to. So the deputies will be out there, they'll be taking charge, they'll be making sure that things are going the way they're supposed to go. If they don't go the way they're supposed to go, we'll back up and punt. It's as simple as that. And that's really all I have.
One thing I'll just add to this, if this should pass tonight, one thing I would like to see happen is, after we go through a summer of this, to schedule a meeting and bring individuals to come in, and let's gather the information from this test for summer something. Let's get feedback. Let's find out what they've experienced, what they see, what's not working, what is working, what just must need to be made. But let's go through this, and now let's schedule a meeting with whoever wants to come to, and let's make sure it's out there, everybody knows about it. And now let's get the feedback on, did it work? Didn't it work? What do you see? What should we change, what not? And then, then we can take it from there.
Good point. Good point.
Commissioner Payman, I would even take that a further step, to say, let's go ahead and schedule a meeting prior to the July 4th weekend, just to see how the first month has gone. Because 4th of July is the highest-trafficked weekend, and if we need to make some tweaks between now or from Memorial Day before July 4th, I would say that we go ahead and have a meeting prior to that.
And Commissioner, and Commissioner Gilby, there's never enough feedback, believe me. I mean, the more we can get, the better. We'll get it. But I think that's fine. I think that's a reasonable request, so...
Any further questions for Mr. McCree? At this time, I will open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve this with the additional change that Ms. Kitty brought up of the Friday prior to Memorial Day to Labor Day, and with the rest of the language remaining the same.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I have four ayes and two noes. Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Is anyone going to leave, or is everyone staying here? I'll just take a second so people can funnel out. Thank you.
We'd like you to stay.
Right.
All right. Okay. Moving on to new business. Considering, yeah, excuse me. Consideration in action, PB 13-17, University Park Plan Development. Norman Bebo and with Elon Vacations are requesting to amend the master plan and terms and conditions document for University Park located at 108 Amherst Drive, Tax map 124J, parcel OSP2, Popular Branch Township. The request is to allow the maintenance of the 25-foot, undisturbed vegetated buffer along the rear property line. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero. And if I would, anyone that's going to speak on this issue this evening, if you would come up, please to be sworn in.
Mr. Chairman, I do intend to speak, but as an attorney, not as a act witness.
Okay.
If you want me sworn, I'll swear.
I would appreciate it, y'all being sworn in. Thank you. Please put your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand.
Chairman, Mr. McCree.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do, sir.
Thank you. You may be seated. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have before you tonight is an application for Mr. Bebo to amend the terms and conditions and the master plan associated with his use permit. And to give you a little bit of background information, in September of 2015, the applicant came before the Board of Commissioners and for approval of a planned development at the location 108 Amherst Drive. the location 108 Amherst Drive. During this approval process, the applicant agreed to a 25-foot undisturbed buffer along the western property line between his project and the McMillan property. That was, that undisturbed buffer was a point of contention throughout the last year and a half that we've, that this project has been underway. We received in, starting in April of 2016, we began receiving complaints that there's disturbances within that undisturbed buffer, and staff made a notice of violation. The applicant, Mr. Bebo, appealed the notice of violation to the Board of Adjustment that he had actually had gone into the 25-foot undisturbed buffer that was associated with his use permit. He appealed that zoning violation decision, and the Board of Adjustment upheld that decision. So we've been over in the last, since that decision came out from the Board of Adjustment, staff has been doing code enforcement on the situation that Mr. Bebo would go into the buffer, and we'd have violations. So fast forward a little bit to this past late summer, the applicant's lawyer contacted staff, contacted me to want to be able to go into the buffer and remove dead, diseased, and dying trees. Staff said that we don't have the authority to change the conditional use permit, or the use permit, the terms and conditions, but he would need to appeal to the Board of Commissioners to change that decision. So what you have before you is he is requesting that change of the 25-foot undisturbed buffer. He is requesting to be able to, the language that staff is suggesting, that the existing master plan and plat and terms of conditions be amended to allow for the removal of dead, dying, diseased, or naturally fallen trees within the 25-foot undisturbed buffer based on a written recommendation and delineation by a certified arborist or North Carolina Forest Service and prior approval from the county. So that is the request before you tonight, that the terms and conditions of the applicant's use permit be, the language be amended to allow essentially a little bit of maintenance of that 25-foot undisturbed buffer on the western side of his property and project area.
Thank you, Ms. LaCicero. Any questions for Ms. LaCicero?
Ms. LaCicero, did you say that after the notice of violation was upheld, you guys had more violations? Is that correct?
Um.
That staff had gone back out and found more instances?
Yes, and this has been a challenge for staff because we never had a good baseline for the amount of trees that were there to begin with. So he has had to do two supplemental landscaping's where we have been able to figure out that there were violations of this 25-foot undisturbed buffer, and at this time, both of those, those two supplemental landscape areas are in compliance with his, with what he submitted to take care of those violations.
Okay.
Have the adjacent property owners been contacted, and how did they, are they in agreement?
They're here this evening.
They're here this evening. When the applicant's lawyer contacted us, contacted me about, about to change this language, it was so that they could come to an agreement, that if he could get an agreement with the property owners, that he wanted to be, his client, the applicant, wanted to be allowed to go in and remove dead and dying trees. Dead, diseased, and dying trees would be part of a property agreement between Mr. Bebo and the McMillans is the, is how the applicant's attorney, why he requested this.
Do you know that they have an agreement?
At this time, I do not know if they have an agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. LaCicero, when this first came before the board and planning, was the property, adjacent property owner, I mean, part of this original agreement or use plan was originally anybody agreed to leave that buffer alone? I mean, and that's why the previous board approved it with the buffer, correct? And I think that satisfied the adjacent property owner at that time, that if, you know, if the buffer was left alone, I think that's what was told to the commissioners, and that's one of the deciding factors why that was approved at that time, correct?
Correct. That was an agreement, the applicant agreed to that. That was through the approval process. You were part of that board at that point.
Correct.
So yes, part of the approval process was that he agreed to that 25-foot undisturbed buffer.
And to help shield both parties from everything.
Now, ideally, you would like that buffer to be able to flourish and grow, and I think the intent, I would hope the intent would be to remove the dead and diseased trees so that this buffer could flourish and grow without the, without dead trees in there or the risk of disease.
I guess then, was that not a consideration when it was first approved, knowing that you're going to get, I mean, I guess when the word "undisturbed" is pretty distinct.
Exactly.
Otherwise, I would think the board would have said, okay, we'll have a buffer there. I know a lot of developments we do, we put buffers in there. I don't see too many developments that we prove that say "undisturbed buffer." So there should have been some reasoning for this, one to be undisturbed buffer, just not a standard buffer.
Right, and Mr. McCree may be able to corroborate this, but this was something that came out during the testimony during that process and here, and I think it was the applicant's engineer that opted for an undisturbed buffer, and the applicant agreed to it. If that's not, if that's not correct, I'm sorry if.
I mean, I'm sure we're going to hear some testimony, you know, back and forth, but I just was trying to get some background clarification again on the original.
It was, it was put into the terms and conditions, and it was put on the master plan for this, for this project. So now, with "undisturbed," and then with the Board of Adjustment decision, that "undisturbed" means "undisturbed," and that they shouldn't be going in there, we're kind of at a quandary of how to maintain the health of this buffer and not have code violations.
Ms. LaCicero, have there been any discussions or conversations trying to come to some type of an agreement or some way to mitigate the issue between Elon Vacations, Norman, and the McMillan property? The McMillans have issue with him going in the buffer because they want their vegetated buffer, they want that area separated from their property. Mr. Bebo has an issue with the farm, with what goes on at the farm. Has there been any type of discussions between the two attorneys to try to come to a resolution that's allowing this to move forward? And do we know if that's come to fruition at all? I know myself had had a discussion with Mr. Bebo that did not work out, and I just have concerns about that. The McMillans came up before the board when this was approved and stated what they were doing. We're going to have a hog farm. I believe Mr. Bebo was aware of that. Mr. McMillan was aware that there's going to be houses. At that time, everyone seemed to be fine with everything that was going on, and now there's an issue going on. So bringing this forward was under the basis of, well, let's have an agreement between the McMillans and the Bebos, and so we can let all this die. And at this point, to my information, and I'm sure the attorneys will speak, they do not have an agreement, and that concerns me. That concerns me for both parties.
Yes, we were hoping to reach some type of resolution. I think the county has tried to talk with each property owner individually, and it's my understanding that they were working together towards something, and that this language would help facilitate that agreement so that maybe the health of the buffer. But I'm not sure at this time where those talks stand.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak. I was on the board when this decision was made, and a big part of our decision for this development was the undisturbed buffer, to keep that division between the properties. I know on numerous occasions, or multiple occasions, I shouldn't say numerous, but multiple occasions, there have been some disturbance in that buffer zone to take care of some of the dead and some of the trees that were threatening or were an issue with the development prior to even the building's beginning. So this has been an ongoing issue with disturbing, an undisturbed buffer that was designated in the original decision.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. LaCicero, actually, I see who where the planning staff is recommending this. I see the one-to-one ratio, if we cut one out, we put one back. Well, one of the things we found in certain vegetation items that we do is that they go back and plant a tree this tall. Well, have we decided that we want a six-foot tall tree, or a five-gallon bucket, whatever they call it, so we know that we're putting something back which, instead of waiting 10 years to get six-foot tall, we have only five years, and it'll start filling out a little more, so it's a benefit to both parties to fill in?
You can make that specification if you would like. That would be very much specific in as much direction as you can give staff. That would be, you can definitely do that.
Do we know, I mean, I'm not a horticultur, or I don't have, whatever it is, I don't have all of this, but I mean, I'm just trying to think of what would be a good ratio of a sized tree or anything. Do we have any idea what might work in other type of shrubbery or screening things that we've done in the county in the past? Do we say we want a tree this size or anything?
Well, we, in the staff report, we did include a section from our administrative manual about the plantings that, for what you could replace. They talk about a two-inch caliper or understory trees. A canopy tree should be a minimum of a caliper of two inches at the time of planting. Understory trees have a minimum caliper of, you know, 1.5 inches. If you feel that that needs to be increased?
I would think yes.
Okay.
I mean, I would think, I'm looking, I mean, I've seen trees that people park in the yards, but I mean, do we have to make that, I mean, I'd say at least three or four feet tall. I mean, I would think a tree something of that size would be much more conducive and probably have a better chance of surviving than something that's one and a half inches tall.
Well, a caliper.
If that's not tall, it's.
It's round, caliper, yeah. Sorry.
Told you, I don't plant trees, folks, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, caliper is the size of the trunk.
Okay.
Essentially.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? If I could have the, Mr. Bebo, if you want to speak this evening?
Yeah, I mean, basically, what I'm here for is exactly what, you know, we've requested an amendment to the master plan so that we can remove dead, dying, and diseased trees from the buffer area. This has been going on for a year and a half, two years. You know, we did go in there, we removed stuff, and we were in violation, we were found in violation, we replanted stuff. You know, last year, we had those two storms, and then we had Matthew come through, which really devastated that place. I mean, we lost 28 trees. There were trees that fell through onto the McMillan property. We couldn't touch them. There are trees that are going to continue to fall on the McMillan property. We can't do anything with them. There's a lot of dead underbrush. I went to the county, the county said to me, you know what? If you can get a letter from an arborist or a letter from the Department of Forestry that says that this is, that by removing this stuff, it would enhance the buffer, then we would work with you to be able to go in there and clean it out. I said, okay. So we called the Department of Forestry. They came in in July. They wrote a letter, which we supplied to the county, to the planning department, which said, and you guys have it, it's part of that packet there that you had, and they said, yeah, it would enhance it. You know, there's little sprigs that are starting to grow, and these things are not going to grow with all this dead stuff and the diseased trees in there. We went back to the Department of Forestry again last week, and I've got another letter, different forestry person. So now we've had two people from the forestry department come in that have said it would behoove you to clean this up. That's all we're looking to do. I don't want to make it go away. I don't want to look at the farm. The farm doesn't want to look at us. That's fine. You know, all I want to do is enhance the buffer. That's all we've tried to do. Now, I listened before about this, you know, undisturbed buffer. You know what? I went before, I guess it was the Board of Adjustment, to try and get that heard. The Board of Adjustment, Mr. McCree, they would not let the tape be shown of what was actually said at that meeting. That meeting never was the word "undisturbed" used. What was approved by David Griggs, or recommended by David Griggs, and approved by the Board of Commissioners, was there would be a 25-foot buffer. The word "undisturbed" came in after, and the word "undisturbed" was used by my engineer because the county instructed him to put "undisturbed." That was your verbiage, but that was not what was agreed to at that meeting. And nobody wants to go back to the beginning of time and say, you know what? No, we screwed up. We really didn't, you know, those words weren't transcribed properly. You know what? I'll live with that, but this is just pure common sense, what we're trying to get approved here. You know, you're basically telling me that if, you know, paper, debris, garbage goes into the buffer, just leave it there. If a kid loses a ball in the buffer, he can't go in there and get it. This is just sheer stupidity. I mean, you know, it's a safety hazard back there. There are trees leaning. You know, you tell a little kid, five, seven years old, don't go play in there? That's like giving them, you know, telling them, go ahead, go do it, because as soon as you tell somebody not to do it, they're going to do it. All we're trying to do is maintain the buffer. You've had staff out there, the staff has taken pictures, what I've planted back there, what I've done. This board was afraid, oh, my God, you know, you're going to build, but you're not going to put the amenities in. Not put the amenities in? I had two buildings built out of the seven. I had a clubhouse, a pool, a playground, and a basketball court. I've done everything that I promised I was going to do. You know, I'm trying to do something for Oa Kurtuk. I pay a lot of taxes, and all I'm getting is pooped on, okay? That's the way I feel about it. And I don't know what you guys want from me. I really don't. I'm not trying to get one over on you. I'm not trying to get one over on McMillan's. All I want to do is enhance this buffer so that we have some type of shielding between the farm and us. That's all I'm looking for.
Mr. Bebo, if I could ask you a couple of questions. On the Board of Adjustment decision, did you appeal that?
Did I appeal it? No.
You mentioned safety concerns just now and about trash getting into the buffer. Have you thought about putting up a fence?
Have I thought about putting up a fence? We had a discussion about a fence.
To keep people out of the buffer?
We had a discussion about a fence.
Right. We had, no, we had a discussion about putting a fence on the property line. Have you thought about putting a fence at the beginning of the buffer? So people can't go into the buffer, so trash can't get into the buffer.
I got a price to put a fence in, and it was close to $26,000.
That's incorrect, Mr. Bebo. It was $8,800.
No, no.
You and I had that discussion.
Yeah, you and I did, but you couldn't give me a proposal. I got the proposal.
$8,000 was the.
I got the proposal, Mr. Hannigan. I did.
Right, you got a commercial proposal, and there was another proposal out there for $8,800.
Which I never saw. Which I never saw, which I never saw, and you say I got a commercial proposal. Okay. It's a commercial property.
It's a residential property. Any further questions for Mr. Bebo? Thank you, Mr. Bebo. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. My name is Kraus Gray. I'm an attorney. My office is in Killover Hills. My home is in Point Harbor. I do live in this particular county. I have to apologize. My wife has told me this is no-shave November. She likes a beard, so I'm growing one.
Why wouldn't she?
Cannot answer that. I represent Mr. and Mrs. McMillan, the young couple sitting over there with the lady going, at this particular moment. They're a young couple. Yes, they came in. They told this county they bought a parcel of land, and they are going to do hog farm. Something that Currituck County has been involved in as far as agriculture and hog farms and cattle throughout its history. Now, we're changing. There's no question, Currituck County is changing. This gentleman has figured out how to make money, and I usually represent developers, and I'm all for what he's doing in the sense of making a project. The reason I'm here before you to ask you to not approve what has been submitted to you is that there was an understanding that it was going to be a 25-foot, undisturbed buffer. That's what's on the plat. That plat's prepared by his engineer. He's already been found guilty, and he's admitted here before you that he went into that undisturbed buffer. And yes, there's been a lot of contention between his client and my client, back and forth, which, most of which is not something that you, the commissioners, need to be actively involved in. But, the buffer is something that you are actively involved in because it was you, the commissioners, that made that decision to try and separate these properties. Your staff was kind enough to go out and produce a letter dated September 11, 2017, and they sent it to the McMillans, and I believe you probably have seen this. If not, I would recommend and request that it be added as a part of the evidence before you. That letter of determination was after meetings that occurred with staff, with myself and the McMillans, to talk about what the McMillans had seen, what they were concerned about, and the fact that there had been a degradation of that buffer by things going in it, equipment going in it. And your staff was kind enough to go out and document the entire length, and they broke it into sections. And just looking through it briefly, Section 15, approximately the first six feet of the buffer appears to have been disturbed by equipment. One broken tree remains within buffer. Section 16, approximately first six feet of buffer appears to have been disturbed by equipment. Cannot detail when, however, unable to determine time of cut, there's one tree cut down. And throughout this, Section 24, found tree had been cut. Yes, there's trees laying on the ground, many of them, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you all of them, because I certainly have not gone out there and counted each tree that's on the ground, but a lot of them are trees that were cut. And now we have the developer coming in and telling you, well, let me go in and remove what I did. Reward me. I respectfully request that you not do that. And I'm going to give you a couple of reasons why. First, again, it's not in your purview. There is, have been some negotiations since August of this year to try and resolve. Now, we've not resolved some disputes that we have between ourselves. And we certainly would like to do so, but unfortunately, from my perspective, and it's just me personally speaking, I feel like the goalposts keep getting changed. Each time we get a, something of what they want, it's different from what I last saw. New conditions put on, new things that they want. And that's their right. I mean, they're able to do that, but that's not really before you. What is before you is the undisturbed buffer. The whole purpose of that buffer is to prevent why we're here now, which is disputes between the parties. We have a hog farm. Hunter, their son, is a member of the National Junior Swine Association, raises them for that. They do them commercially. And yes, guess what? With a hog farm, you can have smells. Sorry, just a fact of life, you know? And the purpose of that buffer was to cut down on that. That's the reason the prior board approved it. When you go in and cut stuff down, you no longer have that cutting down of sights and smells crossing. You now have a situation to where every time you put a piece of equipment in there, what's it doing? It's tearing down, cutting, coming in and cutting down a tree, but you're also cutting down and tearing up the underbrush that's below it. And the proposal that is before you, that they're asking you to adopt, does not contain anything specifying that you must put in a reasonable tree. And I heard the gentleman speak about, well, what size? You know, you put a little tree like this, how long does it take before it gets to a size that it's accomplishing the goal that we want accomplished, which is to keep sights, sounds, and smells away from this development project? And I have to compliment. I think he made a great development project, you know? And I read an article where he said that he's rented every one of his rooms. I think that's great. I represent developers most of the time, so I like developer to do. The other part simply being, as you tear out that underbrush, you really are tearing up what's going on. And that's what really is the detriment. So, as presently before you, on behalf of the McMillans, I respectfully request that you do not approve what is before you. Thank you for your time. I'll answer any questions anyone might have.
So, do you have any knowledge that there were healthy trees removed, or was Mr. Bebo simply taking down trees that were dead or dying? Do you have any?
I cannot certify to you, sir, because I did not personally see.
Right.
I'm merely giving you hearsay testimony, which is worth exactly what you think it is, but as my understanding, yes, there were some healthy trees that were removed.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
For clarity, y'all have not come to any type of an agreement?
No, sir, we have not.
Thank you.
But I will say we're still talking.
Thank you.
I don't want to say that it's not going to happen.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Gray? Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilt?
Thank you. I wasn't really originally intending to speak here, but I want to clarify a few points. First, my understanding is not a single tree that's in the buffer was ever cut down. What happened here is that a hurricane or heavy winds came and blew trees down within the buffer. But for the force of nature, there would have been nobody going into the buffer to do anything. So, there's not a single tree within this 25-foot buffer that was cut down in some kind of attempt to change the conditions of the use permit. That's the first point. So, all the litigation that came stems from trees being knocked down or blown over in the buffer, and then my client, presuming he had the right to go into the buffer and took, take out a tree that had been knocked over by a storm. And I was not the attorney representing Elan Vacations or University LLC when it went before the Board of Adjustments hearing, but I've read the order that stems from it, and the testimony of Mr. Bebo at the hearing, as recited in the order that was drafted, states that he sought the authority to remove dead, dying, and diseased trees. So, let's understand that the purpose, the objective of this amendment is to remove dead, dying, and diseased trees so as to thicken the existing buffer. It's not to make it look some way that he wants to, or to make it pretty, although he did think that when the trees were knocked over by a storm, he could go in there and take them out. I have photographed and submitted to Ben Woody photographs showing very, very large trees, a group of three or four of them, and I'm not going to tell you, Mr. Hannig, you've been out to the property evidently. There are some very large trees, are there not, that are, that have been blown over by a storm and are leaning into Mr. McMillan's property. In the backyard of my office in Grandy, a very large tree got blown over and was sticking into my neighbor's yard. I thought it was incumbent upon me to remove the tree that was, had fallen into my neighbor's yard. That's why my client wanted to go into the buffer. More importantly, the objective of establishing a buffer is to enhance the vegetative growth between the two properties. The state forest rangers, who have no skin in this game, have no interest at all, have stated that if you leave the dead, diseased, and dying trees in the buffer, you're going to get the result you don't want, which is that it's not going to promote the growth of vegetation. That's, so the intent here is to accomplish the clear stated objective of this body and my client in establishing a buffer of vegetation between the two property owners. The other factual thing, my understanding is, and I don't, I'm sorry, I really didn't think, based on the report that I'd seen coming here, that there was any dispute other than the staff was recommending that this be done. I do know that I spoke extensively with Ben Woody about this matter beforehand, but let me just kind of recite the history as I know it to be. I don't remember the precise date, but I'm going to say that the vote to approve the subdivision plat was, say, July 25. Mr. McMillan purchased his property like three days before there was a vote. So, although he may have been the title owner of the property on the day of the vote, it was just very close in timeline. And there was no farm on the property at the time that this body voted. So, what you had was the Currituck County Commissioners approving a residential subdivision and establishing a buffer between the residential subdivision and the neighboring landowner. I think it's important for you to know and recognize that your own UDO says that if you have dead or diseased trees on any property in the county, you don't need a lot clearing permit or anything like that. Any citizen, you know, even if you have a buffer. So, if it had just said, "buffer," you know, between the two properties, under your own UDO, you have the automatic right to go in there and cut out the trees. The other thing that your UDO says is that if you're going to establish farming operations, you can't have livestock pen or chickens and things like that within a certain radius or distance from the property owner, from the adjoining lot owner. So, you can't have a hog pen. You can't have a manure pile right up against your budding property owner's land in Currituck County if you follow the UDO. But, there's an exception, and it's called the bona fide farm. There's a legislative section in the North Carolina Legislature that says your UDO doesn't apply if you have a bona fide farm. And so, what you had was a dispute that rose up between Mr. McMillan and Elan Vacations over the border between their two property and the use rights of their individual property, and to what extent the county's rules and regulations interplayed in their disputes. That is, as a natural matter of law, Mr. McMillan can't tell his neighbor, University Park LLC, what to do on their own land. Only the county can do that if it applies the UDO. Likewise, my client can't tell Mr. McMillan to do anything on his own land unless it involves the UDO. And so, you had the county caught in the middle between two adjoining landowners having disputes. And I would, I would just respectfully submit to you all that you really shouldn't encourage the parties to work out their disputes by use of the county ordinances. I will tell you, just by way of history, one of the, one of the historical things was, as, as I got into the case, Mr. Woody was, the final decision of the Board of Adjustments hadn't been submitted. Mr. Woody was issuing citations, and I had discussed with him, well, we won't appeal the establishment of my client's land use if you'll just let us go in and cut out these very obviously dead design, dying, leaning, in some case, safety-issue trees. And just, just before the deadline for the appeal lapsed, he said, okay, I'm going to find, despite what the Board of Adjustments ruling was, that there is a safety exception, that if a tree looks like it's going to fall over and hurt somebody, I'm going to allow you to go in there and cut it out. So, that was one of the exceptions that went in there. And I also came to the conclusion that there is law regarding nuisance in North Carolina, which would enable my client to bring a private cause of action for maintenance of a large pile of manure right up against a residential subdivision. And so, I wrote a letter to Mr. Gray saying, in effect, I won't sue you for nuisance if you will contact the county and tell them it's okay for us to go in there and just clean out those trees, the dead, dying, and diseased trees, and let the vegetative buffer between the two properties grow, and you move your manure pile. That's kind of, that's kind of the gist of it. And then, just so that you know by way of history, I then contacted Mr., well, county staff and Mr. McCray, and I think the position taken was, well, once we've established this rule, that you can't go into a buffer if it's got the designation "undisturbed" on it, and do what every other citizen in the county can do, even if the neighbor agrees, we can't do it unless you all vote for it, unless you all basically undo the decision from the Board of Adjustment, which in effect says you can't go into an undisturbed buffer for any reason, period, because that's the way it's been established. But, the point being made here is, the reason you said "undisturbed" was you want the natural vegetative buffer between the two properties to grow. When a storm comes along and takes out half the trees in the buffer, you're impeding your objective. And moreover, any governmental action has to have some logical purpose underlying it. And so, the purpose is to let the vegetative growth happen. And the two park rangers, and by the way, what my client did was, he went and spray painted every dead and diseased tree, or just very large trees that are just lying on the ground with spray paint. And there are two park service letters that say, those specific trees need to be taken out so that the buffer can, the trees in the buffer can grow. Now, my clients will or will not work out the issue of where you're going to put your manure and your pigs, but I mean, if they had to follow the county ordinance, what we're asking is what the county ordinance requires. But, that's between us, and the relevant issue for this body, it seems to me, is what, what me, is, is what, what do we do and what do we authorize as a matter of policy when we establish a buffer between two properties? And if the objective is to let the vegetation between the two properties grow, and if a storm comes and knocks down trees, then take the dead trees out. That's all you're saying. That's all we're asking for permission to do. No one is asking, as Mr. Gray stated implied, for the authority to go in or take out trees because we don't like where they're sitting. That's just not true. Not a single tree that we're seeking, that have been spray painted to be taken out, was ever knocked over except by a storm. And I have multiple copies, so about eight copies of spray painted trees in a November 15th, 2017 letter from, from, you know, a county forest ranger, saying, "Take those dead and dying trees out to allow the vegetative buffer to grow." And I'd, I'd make them available to you and, and... Ask that you look at them and just, just so that we're clear, Mr. Bevo has been asking the county staff before we came here today to meet with the park rangers on site and look at the exact trees we're talking about, so you can see the ones that have been spray painted and authorize them to take them out. And I, and I would just encourage you all not to get into the position of trying to resolve landowners' disputes over things like Mr., uh, Mr. Gray says, "Well, it smells." The reason there is a legislative exception for hog farms, there's an exception in case law for hog farms, because hogs create an enormous amount of manure and smell. And the fly infestation in the back of this property is tremendous. I think Mr. Gray and I are gonna be able to work out the issue of manure and hogs, which is the primary concern. And if we don't, we'll resolve our disputes with, in, in a court of law, which is where these issues should be dealt with. I don't believe it should be, you know, the, if I didn't, Mr. Hall, did you get one? Did I give you enough of these?
Do you have the short ones?
I got, I got, here, I got, I got a couple more. So, I mean, to the extent that, um, you know, I'm not a witness, Mr. Gray's not a direct fact witness, and, um, I guess, Mr. Payment, you did go, you testified at the, the, uh, Board of Adjustments' hearing, I saw that in the notes, obviously, I wasn't there. But that is my understanding, is that, that there's not a single tree, there's not, there was no cutting done within the buffer of a tree that wasn't knocked over by a storm. I mean, and, and there's nothing about the language that we are asking you to adopt that would change that at all. So that's the issue.
I guess, I mean, I'll just make a couple comments really quick. I mean, if, if anybody grew up in Grandy, which I did...
He was in the band?
No, no, no. There was a hog farm there that was, you know, pretty close to my house, and, I mean, wind blew just right sometime, I mean, it was just odor, you just had, you knew it was there, and it was, yeah. But, you know, you lived with it, it was there, it was part of the farming, that's the heritage, and, I mean, I grew, I grew up with that, as a kid, I was, no, that was just one comment I wanted to make, but, um, I, I don't think this board wants to stop your client from doing what they were approved to do. Building the homes, everything's great. But on the flip side of it too, we also have to respect the McMillan's rights, and when the, when this was coming before the board originally, there was public hearings, a lot of discussions, and you kept bringing up buffers. And I would agree, if it was a buffer, but the language did not say "buffer," it said "undisturbed buffer." And that's the part where I understand the intent, and tree's fallen over, but what I, what I'm struggling with is, is why, just a courtesy, hey, phone call, "Hey, can you come out and look at this before I go in there and do something? Can you see if, if, if I'm allowed to do this?" Because it was, it mean, it was, it was in the UDO, it was signed off. And then with the overhangs, I guess, Mr. Cicero, if, if a tree is overhanging on your property, can you cut it off at your property line without going into the buffer and not disturbing it at that point? I, I, I don't know if you can, I mean, I, if there's an emergency danger, I don't know either, but if there's an emergency and you got a tree hanging over, I think you could whack it right here and leave the piece in the buffer there for the time being until the decision could be made.
That was my predecessor's interpretation, was that he could go in and cut it off at the buffer.
At the property line, but not go in the buffer.
Go in the buffer, but, you know, if something was hanging over, you can cut it off at the buffer.
And I think what the issue is, is instead of doing that, there was, there was a troshment into the buffer, um, instead of, there's, and I think the whole thing here is just the, the, the undisturbed. Now, I understand your client's concern about undisturbed buffer, but until that's changed, I mean, I hate to say it, but undisturbed, nobody should be going in, and I, and I understand that, but that's the way, you know, the McMillan's understood it, that's what they approved when it was, was first laid out here, is it would be undisturbed, and that's great, and that's what they were assuming was gonna take place. Now, my understanding is, just recently, there's been more entrances in there with marking of stuff, and we still have undisturbed on the UDO. And if that's the case, then there's still violations going on. And, 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 and I can't understand why those violations are still going on until we get a clarification on this.
What, so, so let's, um, let's, let's just, first off, this is the body to deal with what you do when there's undisturbed, disturbed, undisturbed. So, so, so let us say we have a tree that is leaning, it's on, it's on my, and, and there are photographs of this tree given to Ben Woody. This tree, the base of this tree is outside the buffer zone. The, the majority of this leaning tree is in the buffer zone. And if we cut this off, then this tree falls into the buffer zone. And now we got a huge, dead, dying, diseased tree lying in the middle of the buffer zone. And so I guess I would say to you, what is the public policy purpose in having that as policy in Currituck County?
I, I can't answer that right now. All I can say is, it was decided...
But you're the body to answer.
Well, what I can say is, it was voted on as "undisturbed." Until that's changed, I mean, and the Board of Adjustments even ruled "undisturbed" means "undisturbed." Again, I'm not, you know, I, I, I don't disagree, I love cleaning up my backyard, I love cleaning up stuff, but until that's changed, it has to stay undisturbed until this board or somebody else makes a change.
Okay, well, and then, then I would say that I've been, uh, writing and communicating to the staff and back to Ben Woody of saying, "Let's..." In fact, Mr. McCree, uh, suggested that we amend the language you used to say "designating trees." Let's designate the trees. So I said, "Let's go spray paint the trees that we think are dead, diseased, and dying, bring the park rangers and the county out to the property to identify the trees, designate the trees, as the county attorney had recommended." And then the assertion is, "Somebody went into the buffer zone to spray paint the trees," and that's another violation. What's the public policy purpose for this body to object to that?
So you're saying that the county directed you to go in there and spray paint them?
No, I said, "I want to do that," because the county said, "Let's designate the trees." Well, if the park ranger came, would the park ranger not have to go into the property and look at the trees?
Well, at that point, I would think we'd contact the county staff to go out there with everybody, and let's meet and get together, and let's call it one time, and let's have a discussion.
Which is precisely what we asked the county to do. But we didn't want any ambiguity, I wanted you all to see the trees that we want to cut down. And I, 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 again, I go back to this issue of, there should be some correlation between policy established by this body. And I gotta wonder, what's the policy there? Are, are we just saluting because somebody said "undisturbed," that means it's, you know, some kind of magic line that nobody can go over? There has to be some rational basis here.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to understand that this is not an issue whereby the Board of Commissioners made a legislative decision and established policy. This was a permit application from an applicant that, in various documents from 2013 to 2016, requested this board approve a conditional use permit with a condition that provided for a 25-foot undisturbed buffer along the western border of this property. It's not a policy issue, it wasn't policy being adopted, it was the Board of Commissioners approving at the time a conditional use permit with a condition requested over the course of three years on numerous documents by the applicant. So just wanna make sure the board's not being confused by a legislative decision and policy discussion versus a quasi judicial decision and permit with conditions requested by the applicant that was approved.
Thank you, Mr. McCree.
But am I, am I, uh, am I correct in making the assertion that what we have here now is, it's, it's, the interpretation of the term "undisturbed" has been memorialized, but prior to the Board of Adjustments, it was sort of like an issue of first impression, we gotta decide, what does it mean? Right? And, and now there's been a determination of that. And am I, am I incorrect about this, Ike? Is it not, this is the proper forum in which to establish what the term means or revoke the term entirely, and then it would go into the traditional meaning of a buffer?
It, it is correct that the Board of Adjustment, after another quasi judicial proceeding and evidence, made the decision and determination and defined what "undisturbed buffer" meant. That is why staff nor this board, absence a change or modification in the terms and conditions statement of the master plan for this project, cannot do anything any different with regard to that interpretation made by the Board of Adjustment. As noted earlier tonight, that decision was not appealed to, to the Superior Court, that decision is now binding upon the applicant, upon this board, and upon county staff. It is correct that one cure could be, if this board so chose, would be to allow for amendment as requested of the terms and conditions statement and the master plan for this project. But under numerous cases in North Carolina, you are not required to modify a conditional use permit that has been granted based upon conditions requested by the applicant and under which the applicant has proceeded and benefited from. You may do so in your discretion, you are not required to do that.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. Mr. Wills, do you have anything else?
Yeah, well, just, just to be clear, we're not, there, there's not gonna be anything the applicant is going to do except to remove trees blown over by an act of God or a storm. That's all we're looking to do, period.
Any further questions for Mr. Wills?
Uh, Mr. Wills?
Yeah.
I've heard the thing about a fence possibly being built. Are you aware that there was a fence already in the buffer prior that has been dilapidated and in poor condition? Have you seen that?
There, there's a fence that I saw that's on the property line, my understanding is.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, but I mean, it's, it's, I don't...
It's within the buffer, or within the tree line from where it's cleared on one side on Mr., uh, on Mr. McMillan's property and on Mr. Bevo's property, but it's closer to Mr. McMillan's property. Have you seen that old fence that was there?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I, if I did, I didn't really pay, I, I, I was, I thought the only fence that existed was a fence that's kind of like, right on the property line.
That's just inside, uh, so, I'm, I'm asking that because a fence was brought up about it, I mean, but to go into and disturb...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not aware of that being an issue in turn between the clients.
But nobody wanted to go in and disturb the buffer, rebuild that fence that was originally there, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I, you're beyond, I don't know, I don't have the information on that. I don't know, I, I don't...
No one asked you, no one asked you...
No one's asked me, in, in, in none of the correspondence of Mr. Gray and I have had, or Mr. Woody and I, that's just never been an issue that, that I did any investigation of, I just don't know.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I can find out for you.
Thank you, Mr. Wills.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cicero, I have a question for you. When was the first notice of violation on the property? Or the first report of a violation?
Um, April 2016, April 11th, and a notice of violation was sent in, um, in May of 2016.
When was Hurricane Matthew, October of 2016?
That was in the fall of 2016.
Okay.
One month later.
So these disturbances occurred prior to the big storm knocking all the trees down? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, would either one of the McMillan's like to come up and say anything?
No.
No? I know. Um, okay. Um, I have a question for you, Mr. Gray, if you could come back up? Mr. Gray, during the approved, the meeting of the approval of, of this permit, um, did, did Mr. McMillan get up and testify and state that he was going to have a hog farm?
That is my understanding, yes.
Thank you. That, that's all I have.
Can, can I make one point?
You may.
Actually, I'm gonna make two points, and I'll be less than 30 seconds, believe it or not. One, clearly understand, everything that I said and everything that Mr. Wills said is not evidence. The only evidence you really have heard is Mr. Bevo.
That's it.
Yep. That's all your evidence that you have before you, and this is a quasi judicial. The second point, I'm just gonna follow up a little bit on what you stated. Again, I ask you to look at the letter of determination issued by your own staff, and you're gonna see throughout it, it doesn't say every tree, but it talks about a number of trees that were cut. So a statement that the trees that, uh, they went in there to remove were all knocked down by a hurricane is not supported by your own staff.
Thank you. Any further testimony in this? With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, and I wanna make sure I get this from Mr. McCree. If I have personal knowledge of being out there when we were invited by the, all of the commissioners prior to three people being added, is that appropriate for me to say it this time?
You can certainly disclose that.
Okay, let's look at it. When I came a commissioner, this violation came to my attention. First thing that I found was, I went to Mr. Woody, I wish he was here, this time he could speak to it, but I asked him, how did the word, you know, "undisturbed" go into the documentation? And he said it was there originally, and then during the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which I went back and reviewed, uh, Mr. Petry and Mr. Riggs also, but mostly Mr. Petry, made comments about amending certain things and how their motion went, and nothing in there was the word "undisturbed," although it was in writing, and it was signed later by both parties, or by the county and by Mr. Bevo. But originally, the verbal part of it never said anything about "undisturbed." Then when we found out that the county, or was invited to go down and look at this violation, myself, Commissioner Bowman, I think Commissioner Payment, we went down there, and I found three trees, I took pictures. All three were diseased, now they were in the buffer, granted. And I looked at it, and I said, "Okay, I'm not one of these guys out there, I can't tell you what's supposed to be in there, what isn't supposed to be in there." But it looked like it allowed the new three-foot growth that was in there to flourish by clearing it out and getting rid of those three trees. And I made sure from Mr. Woody I was in the right area. And then I look at it, and I see Mr. McMillan and Mr. Bevo, both of them have a right to their property, and I think, I don't wanna see any farm go away in the city, in the county of Currituck, don't wanna see that. But now they're neighbors, and we're kind of forced, if they haven't been able to resolve it, that we are now involved in it. And because us being involved in it, I've gotta look at it, the old fence that I saw that was closer to McMillan's side wasn't being kept up, I don't know whose fence it was or wasn't, and to go in there and put a new fence in that same spot would have done more, more harm than good. Then I know we have a fence possibly on the inside of the property line we could have put in. And I look at it, and I say, "Okay, that might have solved the problem, but then the buffer would have still been there, and if these trees fall, you're gonna tear up the fence." So it's almost like a no-win, and now that you've forced the county to get involved in it, how do we resolve it? Do I think there were violations? Yes. Do I think that I wish the neighbors could resolve it? Yes. But the fact that, listening to staff, talking to Mr. Woody, Mr. Cicero, and the rest of the staff, I make a motion that we approve the amendment that the existing master plan to plat terms and conditions be amended to allow for removal of dead, dying, diseased, or naturally fallen trees within the 25-foot undisturbed buffer based on a written recommendation and determination... and determination by a certified arborist or the North Carolina Forest Service prior to approval from the county, which means, in my understanding of that, every once in a while, if you want to go in there and clean it out, you've got to get this guy to come in here and say, "This has got to happen." You can't just choose it yourself. Finally, the board may also wish to consider replacement requirements for the trees. I agree with Miss LaCicero, to the caliber of the tree, and at least six foot in height, so we can put back a tree that will grow quicker and hopefully fill in the spots that are no longer there by the tree that was taken out, on a one-to-one ratio of hardwoods and pines, as determined by, again, by this certified arborist or the North Carolina Forest Service. And that is my motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve it.
Thank you. I will look for a second. Hearing no second, the motion dies, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, let me say, I would hope that the, both parties would work to get this resolved and then bring something to the board, but I've still got to go back to the original meeting, there was a, there was a public hearing, there was a lot of comments made, a lot of discussions before the original vote was made. I don't think anybody is against Mr. Bevo, and what he's built there looks nice, and keep on, you know, what was approved, and with the farm, again, keep the farm going, that's part of our heritage. But I, at this point, I just cannot see this, or myself, making a change to the original decision until something can be worked out with the two parties, since they're neighbors and they back up in that buffer. It was, it's signed, everyone knew it said "undisturbed," so I'm going to make a motion that we deny the application's request for the amendment. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I have five yays and one no. Moving on, consent agenda?
Motion for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Commissioner's report, Commissioner Hall?
I think Veterans Day down with the American Legion, and I'll say it, I was very proud to be standing there, Commissioner Etheridge and myself, and everybody who had a flag of allegiance, that were who we believed in this country. And I want to thank the veterans for inviting us and having us there. I want to thank the veterans for this county and this country. Also, as Thanksgiving is coming around the corner, folks, safety is paramount. Take your foot up the gas pedal, travel five miles an hour slower when you're on the interstate or when you're on the 55 Rose, because the next guy is trying to get there quicker, let him get there. Take your time, ride light, ride safe. Have a good holiday.
Commissioner White?
I was reading through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners emails we get, and I hope everybody does it.
Did you get your magazine? I got mine.
I got, I did, I did. And there was an article in there about the state seeking internet connectivity, and they had a link within that, and they're really trying to kind of map out, from looking at the article, what, you know, where the problems are, which we know we have here in this county, so it kind of goes part and parcel with what we're trying to achieve. And so I would ask Dan, if you could look into that a little bit further, maybe put that up on the county website with the link, which seems kind of counterintuitive, if you've got an internet problem, you can't really click through on the link to do the map. But anyway, they seem to be recognizing it, and there was another article in the National Association of County Commissioners, that there is some federal money now available through grants. They are recognizing that there's some, you know, obviously issues out there, and it was a couple hundred million dollars that they're looking to start the project with. And with what we're doing, we might commit to be the pilot program for something like that, if we get involved in it, so I'll dump that one on your lap as well, Mr. Scanlon. And other than that, I'll just mimic what you said, if you're traveling for the holidays, safe travels, and enjoy your holiday weekend.
Ms. Gilbert?
Couple things, December 1st is our countywide parade at the Cooperative Extension Center starting at 6:30, they're going to serve hot chocolate and cookies, and the parade will start promptly around 7:00 PM. So I'd invite you to all come out and join in the festivities to kick off the holiday season, and as my other commissioners have said, this is a time of Thanksgiving, so just count your blessings, and I just wish each of you a safe and blessed holiday.
Ms. Etheridge?
I just want to follow up with the same thing that my fellow commissioners have said, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and please remember to be thankful for this great country that we live in.
Commissioner Payment?
Just a couple things, I want to remind everyone out there that the county is getting ready to have the 350th anniversary, and the county's starting to do preparations for a big celebration, and Barbara Snowden, some of y'all may have had her as a teacher for history, as I did, and she knows a lot, and she's heading this up. If you're interested in getting involved, I believe you can contact her, and they're having a meeting, I believe it's at this courthouse tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. If you're interested in helping out or getting involved, she'd love to have some input, and the county would love to have your knowledge of any history of the county. It's going to be a big event, and I'm looking forward to next year's celebration. And secondly, again, you know, volunteer firefighters, I'm one, I got involved, if you have the time to support your volunteer firefighters, to be a firefighter, support, auxiliary, anything you can do to help your volunteer firefighters throughout this county is appreciated, they would welcome with open arms. It is a volunteer basis, they're always looking for help, it is tough out there, and I know jobs and people work more, it's not like it used to be, but if you have the time, it's fulfilling, it's for a good cause, you're helping your county out, and I know everybody, even county, everybody would appreciate that. And happy Thanksgiving, and just remember, all the loved ones out there, and the soldiers overseas, or wherever they're at, that's all.
Thank you. Really, I have, this evening, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, we are truly blessed here, we live in a great county, a great country, and I think next year, I'm going to push for a resolution, just skip Thanksgiving, go straight to turkey sandwiches on Friday. So with that, have a happy Thanksgiving, and I'll pass it over for the Commissioner's, or County Manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just follow up on Commissioner White's comments, those two issues actually play together. There are coverage, internet coverage maps that have been published that are incorrect, and the federal government or loan granting agencies rely on those coverage maps, and when you go look at Currituck County, it says that we have coverage. And so what the Association of County Commissioners are doing is they're asking citizens to go look at the map, and there's a website, and we can post it on our website, that you can go there and pick your residence and click on whether you have coverage or not, as a mechanism to try to validate or make the coverage maps more accurate. It's to our advantage if our citizens do that, because when it truly represents and shows how little coverage we have, it does help us qualify for grant funding or our service providers to get grant funded to come in. So we will post that on our website, and I certainly encourage people to go take a look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. With that, I will recess the regular Board of Commissioners meeting and move to closed session pursuant to GS 143-318-11A3 to consult with county attorney in order to preserve the county attorney-client privilege. Second?
Second.
Second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.